Six o'clock. They like savings now.
That's what I mean.
It says five of six.
Okay. I hear the dings. Okay.
Might need batteries like me.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not late.
No, you're not late.
No, you are right on time.
I made this really nice dinner that took far longer to make than I thought it would.
What do you mean?
Why didn't you invite us?
What's wrong with you?
I don't like that time.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi there. So, it's seven o'clock. Shall we call the meeting to order? And Sally, do you want to say something?
Yes. Which way to face? Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting. I would like first to introduce you to the new chair of the zoning board of appeals, Katie Selberger, and to invite you to join us and stay tuned as we thank, sincerely thank later on in this meeting and after the meeting, a presentation to such a deserving person as our former chair Carl Budman, who we so thank and admire and who is going to remaining on the zoning board of appeals, but has relinquished the chair to his pupil, Katie Selberger, and Carl as her mentor. So, we hope that he will stay with us while we celebrate and thank Carl Budman.
Always looks like you're the American.
Okay, well, good evening. I would like to start out by just mentioning who is here tonight. We have Ellen Rocco, Vicki Ganskin, Carl Budman, myself. Our other member, Dave Pacomo, is not here tonight. We have our planning and zoning secretary Brogan O'Donnell. And I'm very pleased to introduce Bren White, who is our new direct planning director. Bren is newly hired and she has been a planner in New York State for nine years. And we will have her professional input at our meetings. And we thank you very much for coming today, Bren.
Thanks.
That's great.
Okay, so on the agenda tonight, we already have a continuation of a public hearing for ZBA 1309 and the approval of draft minutes from February 11th, 2014, and a few other little things. So, first of all, we are going to continue with the public hearing for the Ten Taylor Street application, which is requesting a front yard setback variance. Could I have a motion to reopen the hearing?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so this is now open. Would you like to give us any more information? Is there anything else you'd like to add to the public hearing?
Sure. Pull forward.
Okay.
So, a little back up. We'll move up to the table. Either way.
Don't worry that much.
So, this morning, we submitted a variance request for two more lots. This is the one that we're talking about right now. And it's just north of the turnaround. So, I have this smaller scale so you can see. So, that's the Ten Taylor Street lot, Lot 38. And then this season, we're planning to also build out these five lots. This is an existing house that's uncompleted. There's another one up there, another one up there. These two, we're also going to be asking for variances on. And the reason for these variances is because the 50-yard setback puts us very close to Tributary 13. We can fit the buildings in without the variances. But if we would like, we think that's a community good, we'd like to be able to pull them as far away towards the street to cluster and group development, shorter driveways, that kind of thing. And it leaves much distance and undisturbed area near the stream, as well as forested areas in general. So, in terms of how this affects the specific variance that we are considering now, which is Ten Taylor Street, Lot 38. It's come to our attention through research into the code and the change of zoning, which was also referenced in the Ten Taylor Street application, that the change from R2 to R1 zoning, which reduced the front yard setback or increased the front yard setbacks from 25 foot to 50 foot, which is fairly dramatic on these approximately 30-acre sites. It is causing some difficulty in that it's making it difficult to do good planning, to do optimal planning for these lots, as well as the other ones in the development. And, you know, that's an issue. The other thing that's related to it is that the purpose, apparently according to the minutes from 2001 when the zoning was changed, was for, to protect against multifamily development. And it didn't really do that. It, a number of the, you know, the potential ways one could build a multifamily. For example, a two-family home is a principal permitted use in both the R1 and the R2 zoning districts. So, there's no change from this 2001 rezoning. Both the R1 and the R2 zones require a special permit, subject to planning board review, for townhouses, senior citizen developments, nursing homes, bed and breakfasts, and hostels. All those in either zoning district require review from the planning board prior to approval. The R2 zone also requires a special permit, subject to planning board review, for multifamily dwellings. And the R1 zone does not have this category. So, under no circumstances can you build multifamily dwellings in, you know, that don't, like townhouses and two-family homes are multifamily in some considerations. But you can't build whatever they consider multifamily, possibly four or more. However, the 130-acre lots in Green Acres, they're too small for multifamily dwellings larger than two-family homes or townhouses. There's no way you can fit a four-unit building on any of these lots. They're just too small. It's not feasible. So, effectively, that zoning change had no effect on the issue of the Brogans' passage, which was ensuring that there wouldn't be able to be multifamily housing. So, the only effect that it actually had was to restrict Anthony from building zero-nitrogenated homes in the most optimal, sustainable manner, which is closest to the street typically. So, you have enough more driveway and site disturbance and such. So, we are going to be proceeding with an effort to have the village board of trustees reconsider this issue and in some way, we hope, undo or revoke, repeal the 2001 rezoning so that it once again is R2, because it's actually, it's not having the intended effect of providing, you know, protecting from bad development. It's actually requiring, if not bad, less than optimal development. So, that has some relevance for this issue, which is why I'm bringing up now. And of course, in succeeding meetings, we'll be considering these two variance requests. Because we would like to build out these six this season, and we understand that some of these considerations about having a law approved or changed or something are slower. It's really for the 12 lots that remain that we would be pursuing the issue with the village board of trustees. But again, it seems like relevant information for your considerations for the single variance. And that's why we're pursuing variances for these two, because we'd like to move expeditiously. And via your board, we have the best chance of hopefully potentially being approved for all three, so that we can build out all six in the most optimal way. It is nice to have input from more people who have experience in good planning. And as we move forward with both the various requests, as well as this appeal to the board of trustees, we will continue to welcome input from all, so that we can achieve what we think would be an improved solution for the community. That's really our goal.
How many units do you plan?
There are currently, in the Green Acres development, there are 18 undeveloped building lots of approximately a third of an acre. For example, this is .42 acres, this is .37, they vary, but they're all about that size. And then, and let me show you this. And then here is the answer to your question. So, here are the six that we're talking about. And then there are four here and four here, and then four more over here. These are the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 that are already built by Anthony and Green Hill Contracting to date. And then, as, just to further explain, so then this is, these are the 25 lots that had not been built out when Anthony bought the property, or a series of properties. This here, where you're just seeing like lot lines in this area, and then, this one raised pointer. This, I think, was the phase two of the build-out. And then phase one is down the hill here towards Route 32, along Lot 2 drive. I'm not sure if you're going to be able to see this. I have these any application packets submitted this morning on letter-sized paper so you could look at these a little better. The color is a little greeny-blue for clarity. But you can see Anthony's buildings, the seven is already built, they all face due south. They have the panels, the solar panels. You can see there. The, and then you can see, here's the four that are undeveloped. Here are the six that we want to do this year. And then there are four, and four, and these four undeveloped so far. You can see that in relation to the other buildings, well, Lot 2, View Drive, these houses are in scale with them. They're similar in some ways. Some of these are further back from the road, and some of them seem to be closer than, say, the 15-foot. They, you know, some of them want to be set further back, or for whatever reason, either developer or the buyers or owners of the property. So, to some extent, this is supposed to use an image to show that we are in context. Already he is built, and as much as one can improve for the future, that he's going to be a good neighbor and build with consideration for the community. That's what I said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me give another piece of information. We heard back from the Ulster County Planning Board, who reported that there is no county impact on this application. We haven't actually got the piece of paper, but we got their word. So, would anyone in the public wish to address this matter? Okay, so could we entertain some board discussion? Yes.
So, I just want to be clear about what you just said.
Yes.
If the zoning hadn't changed, you could be doing exactly what you want to be doing?
Something like that. As it, I'm going to use my visual aid here to answer some of that. To some extent, the quick answer is it depends on the site. All of these are very unique sites in terms of their orientation to the road and the slope and grade, and some of the characteristics, like adjacency to the stream or trees or other. As it happens, three of the six that we're planning to build out this year, part of it is because going through the variance process, it is, well, we'll avoid it when we can. With half of them, it was necessary, really, we think, to go through. And in all cases, as is required by the village code, we saw variances that we felt were the minimum necessary to achieve the goals that we're aiming for. In three of them, we were able to design houses within the R1 setbacks that are reasonable. We still, like, in this example, this happens to be a tree lot. We would be able to leave more trees between these two buildings if we had a 25-foot. But it wasn't worth going through. So, but that's an example of one, you know, that's, I guess, a middle range. This one here, we would have slid that forward towards the road. But again, it wasn't worth it. And these two, because the stream was really close. Here it's not so close on Lot 37, but Lot 36 and 35, it's really quite close. And that's why we felt it was worthwhile to seek it. But it would be nice if we just had a little more freedom to be closer to the road. I mean, that's really the major impact of the benefit we would be seeking by the re-rezoning or relocation.
Answer to your question is, we wouldn't need to be seeking any variances, because we're not going beyond what the R2 required.
We don't anticipate that if it were R2, we would.
We'd never see that.
And these are still what you would be building? The, what you're building is what you would have been building if there was still the R2?
Yes. These are examples of what we intend to be the model home throughout. They're also what was built in the town of New Falls at the other zero-nitrogenated development that's under construction now and partially bought and completed and such.
You came to my mind, hearing you speak, before you got your main points about the change in zoning, that I seem to remember from the planning board days, that generally speaking, it is more appealing to have houses closer to the road. For many people, it is something that creates a streetscape that people enjoy.
It's also about less tearing, less plating.
Less.
Trucking material in. For every 20 feet of driveway, you have to put a truckload in. And if there's any more trucks on the streets of New Falls. So, every, putting it back 50 feet means that we are having, you know, over 50% more, or over 100% more trucks, having to come through the village.
So, could we have a motion then to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, I would just like to review the five questions that we need to think about. And then I will ask for a motion to approve the application. We are to consider whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the variance. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. Whether the requested variance is substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. So, would anyone like to make a motion on ZBA 1309?
I would like to move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Excuse me. Discussions?
Excuse me, discussions, excuse me.
Another discussion.
Yes. Any further discussion?
I actually have a question that I'm assuming would not change my mind, but Stream 13, moving the houses forward, where's the property? Is the stream part of the property that the?
Yes, some of them are over the other side, and some of them are in lines.
So, here, this is Lot 35. The darker dot-dash line is the border. And then you can see just the corner of it has the stream. And then the 20-foot buffer is that dashed line that kind of curves and follows. Lot 36, pretty much that whole border on the south is the stream to a fairly, what, 25 or more foot in from the property line, which is this hard line along here through the stream. So, does that answer, you know, where the stream is in relationship? And it's not particularly close to the actual property in a discussion this evening.
So, there's no, doing this doesn't do anything to put the stream at risk?
Well, it's less at risk if we move the houses and all construction further away. That's, and... I mean, we won't, we won't be in there, you know, in the 20-foot buffer. But we would, effectively, we'd be creating a larger buffer. We, you know, on...
20-foot.
Yes, I would say so, yeah.
Clarification. The variance application is for one property and one property on Langham?
Yes.
And that is Ten Taylor Street?
Yes.
And has the planner reviewed?
Thank you. Have you reviewed this application or?
Yes.
And would you like to share your thoughts with us?
As far as being closer to the street, not only does it work on environmental issues, but also community involvement. If you look at new urbanism design, it has shown that being closer to the street makes you more neighborly. So, I think it's not a problem.
Okay, so, um... Did we get a motion? Yes, we did.
We did.
Yes, okay.
And it was seconded.
It was seconded. Okay, so all in favor? Aye. Okay, any opposed? Then the motion carries. The application is now complete. The next item on the agenda is the, are the minutes from February 11th?
So, okay, so, I'm sorry, just procedurally, not procedurally, just, so, Ten Taylor is good to go, and now you're going to come back for each next lot?
Well, did we submit to Brogan?
Yeah, right, so today we submitted, it certainly was a little late to be on today's agenda. We should be on, we anticipate, next month's agenda. And we'll, we'd like to discuss Lot 35 and 36 concurrently. They're very similar issues, so that makes some sense. And then, I guess, it'll be at least two months in terms of some public hearing again for that next round. That's what we're looking at.
Maybe also, maybe a letter of support for, you know, maybe, you know, put a deed restriction on the lots that there can't be two families. You know, just go back to the, you know, allow the R2 setbacks.
Interesting. That's an interesting point.
I was saying, if we were thinking closer to the street, and then you just go with the original, because lots are, village lots, they're designed for R2 setbacks, you know? That we would make 1,500 square foot, 15,000 square foot lots, you know, it's a third of an acre. You don't, you want to really impose one acre setback restriction on something that's a third of the size, which is basically what it's done here.
I like the idea of the deed restriction. And I don't know if that's our, in our purview to require.
No, they just put a little recommendation. I'm sure you guys are allowed to recommend anything you want, your opinion. Everybody's allowed one, right? So, the board could have an opinion to support.
Well, I think we can put restrictions on the approval, can't we? So, yeah, so that's something we can think about.
Maybe we probably, those are probably not disallowed, like a mother-daughter. That's probably going to be more and more.
I was thinking exactly the same thing.
So, all those houses with the walkout basements could lend that. With parents moving back, the kids moving back, everybody moving back.
Literally mother-daughter again. Okay.
Okay.
That's done. Now, could we have a motion to approve the draft minutes from February 11th, 2014?
Second.
That was the one I was adding though.
Okay, then you take photos. So, wait, I got to get my copy of them out. So, everything seems right to people? Then, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Three abstentions. And that carries. And so now, I would...
I think you need to continue a discussion about something, because we planned on eight o'clock.
I have something. I'll send you. May I do that, though?
Don't.
May I do my shtick now?
Please do.
Well, once upon a time, you yourself, down chair, pulled together some...
Oh, yes.
Some ZBA forms.
Yes.
From Burlington, Vermont, and from a cluster of other communities in New York State. And I've photocopied them to give out to the board and to our building department.
Thank you.
And it's ready to go. Ellen and I will be meeting next week to start the discussion about it. And I was also hoping that Brogan and the building inspectors would put there or in the water for this. Sally for you. And everybody take one, Brogan please, let's say one for Dave, I guess. You can put one on Dave's box?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Well, this is mine.
And I went to the village and asked for a copy of what they handed out. Now, we were under the impression that they hand out these criteria. It's not happening. If this is what they give out, I didn't see it in here, you see. So, immediately, when we have new applicants, until this gets cleared away, we need to make sure that maybe we give them a copy of these criteria that we will be using to make our decisions.
The five.
The five questions.
Katie's five.
Yes, Katie's five, right.
Or area, and five for, you know, use.
Yeah.
So, there.
Yeah, and so the idea is, I think ultimately, that we redesign a form that makes everyone's job easier, so that the applicants understand more clearly what criteria we are legally obliged to consider when we look at their variance requests. And that, you know, I would like to actually see the questions written out and have them write a little response on the application, so that they really reflect on what it is that they're being asked. Yeah, I've seen that one of these applications that I found did that. And I think it's helpful to the applicant, so that when they come to the ZBA, they're really prepared to answer what we care about. And not tell us that they're going to have gorgeous granite countertops and, you know, just be such a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, because, I mean, they obviously care about what they're building. But that's not what we can consider, so...
And we need to see, we need to see perhaps, in some cases, perhaps elevations, the way Dave provided elevations.
That was very nice.
And if we're asked to make a decision that requires, as we have recently, fencing and sheds and that sort of thing, we need building materials, we need colors, et cetera, which we've never done before. I think we're going to move to a little bit better communication and much more controlled.
Now, if we're looking at fences and things, since the code does not specify what building materials and colors are required, then actually, that's not something that we can consider.
It'd be nice to know, though, because we've had some surprises.
Plus, you can also put a condition on for mitigating the circumstances.
Yeah.
So, that's the beauty of your board, that's, we don't have on my board.
A little more flexibility?
A little more, well, a little more power.
Okay.
Stuff to think about.
May I bring up a point?
Sure.
This issue of changing the subdivisions, regulations, by ZBA, follow you without looking at the planning board?
I was going to ask you.
It looks like a site plan that looks like it should be reviewed. It's a site plan we need to review. We did discuss it a little bit at our board. But this is kind of a piecemeal way of doing a subdivision.
Okay, I think that, you know, there's this part of the code that says, "On such matters as have not been previously reviewed by the planning board, the board of appeals shall at least 30 days before the reg..." the Board of Appeals shall, at least 30 days before the required public hearing of any appeal or application, transmit a copy of such an appeal or application to the planning board, together with a copy of the notice of such hearing, so that the planning board may review and submit a report of its opinion prior to the date of such hearing." So, I think that clearly, that is the next step of what should happen with, with the application. I am in agreement with you.
What should happen with what application?
That's not happening now?
No.
No, well...
I don't even know if the planning board needs to know unless somebody's got a shed that's too close to one. But certainly, when it comes to altering lots and subdivisions, and there's a number of them.
Yeah.
Which is something I think our board would be important on.
Our meeting schedules are set up such that you meet before we do. I don't think there's any difficulty, and if it's about a shed and you don't have any opinion, if you don't respond to us within 30 days, it says that, "Planning board failure to submit such a report shall be considered an approving opinion in the matter of the application." So, I, I think, yeah, we should, you know, have what has been turned into the, um, ZBA today, sent over to planning and, um...
In the old days...
Yes.
I couldn't get from Carl in the ZBA without going through the planning board. You had to go through Virginia Highway to get to Carl. And that's just the route to a ZBA, that the planning board had to say, "Beauty of variance." Now, we tried to help people out along the way, so we could shorten this path a little bit. Let the building inspectors decide whether or not to just go right to ZBA. But I think what's happened is that there's semantic beauty in some of these applications that is causing problems.
But isn't this...
And maybe the old system was pretty good.
Yeah.
Isn't this also the point, though, of Brogan sending out everything to the different boards?
Well, I, I sent out the village board, the planning board, and the zoning board of appeals. Everybody gets copies of everybody's minutes and everybody's agendas.
Yeah, but, but I think that what the, the village trustees, who are the elected folk, and actually are empowered to make these decisions, we should not be legislating by saying, "I don't really like that." It seems to me it's pretty clear that if matters have not been previously reviewed by the planning board, the board of, the planning board of, or zoning board of appeals shall, at least 30 days prior, before the required public hearing of any appeal or application, transmit such a copy of an appeal or application to the planning board. And I don't see that we have a choice to do that or not. It says, "You shall do it," and I don't think it is an inconvenience, and I think that, you know, it's a good group of volunteers that work in this community, and I value anyone's opinion. I mean, we may have to make a tough decision, we may not always see eye to eye, but we can at least have the dialogue and get your recommendations, so I'm in agreement with you.
And more often recommendations would be things that we might be able to see that you can mitigate and approve in mitigation.
Yeah.
We can't approve because we can't mitigate. You mean, we are a compliance board, not a planning board. Right? We say we're not to comply with the law, the law.
Yes.
Why don't we just go back and review the process of the last application? How did it get to you?
Directly from, directly from the building inspector. Directly through the building inspector.
The building inspector told...
You're gonna need a variance to say that?
The applicant, that he needed a variance, but the building inspector did not tell the applicant, per what you just said, you go to the planning board first.
Okay.
So that's a breakdown in process at the building department level.
I would argue that because our building department is new, and the placement of that law, it was just overlooked. And now that it has been brought to our attention, yeah.
No, but I'm just, I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm just saying, there is a process in place. It's just not necessarily always being, being adhered to.
Yeah.
And Ellen, I just wanted to say, because we have a policy that all boards should copy each other's minutes, does not mean process should be avoided. That is for information, so that we all can keep up with each other and know what's on the plate.
Exactly, and I agree, and...
And that doesn't make, assume that because the planning board gets our minutes, that they know, you know, it, it's not a referral, that's information only.
Right.
Okay.
Right, but I guess what I'm wondering about is keeping straight on the timing. So, just for example, if we need to be doing this 30 days, we need to notify the planning board, am I hearing this right, 30 days in advance of a public hearing?
Yeah, before the public hearing, yes.
So, that means we've gotten the application, when?
Well, I think that means 60 days, because, um...
So then we're automatically now saying our procedures are such that we need 60 days before we can schedule a public hearing?
Well, do we, can we, I, I need to count this on my fingers. If it comes in, if it comes in 30, all right, let's see what it says.
I would think that it can't be a referral, a planning board referral.
At least 30 days before...
Go up together.
Right together.
Yeah.
So you should be able to have a referral button again, a referral button from the planning board at the same time.
Okay, but the thing is, is it says, "At least 30 days before the required public hearing." So, the application came in today, is the public hearing being noticed right now?
Definitely not, because it's, uh, I think the ZBA has to review it for completeness, so...
So I think you're generally probably gonna be looking at...
Two-month window.
Two-month, a two-month window, and I don't think that's unreasonable for us to try and get things right.
So actually, then are we saying at the same point that we are reviewing it for completeness, that's when we send it on to the planning board?
Yeah, well, but when it first comes in, someone can be reviewing it for completeness, it can go over to the planning board, and then it can all come together, can't, I mean...
So you want the, so I guess that could be something that happens if the building department reviews the application for completeness?
Yes.
Okay.
And then it immediately goes to the planning board, yeah.
Formality of the law, does it say that the ZBA refers it? Or does it say that when the application comes in, the building department will refer it to the planning?
Okay, the board of appeals shall, at least 30 days before the required public hearing of any appeal, transmit such a copy, so it's the board of appeals that transmits the copy.
So you need something, you need a process that you're working on, that says that is the process to be followed. Because if you don't have it, and everybody knows it in common, it seems to me that's where the breakdown is coming.
It has to be in writing, it has to be in...
It has to be in...
It has to be in writing, it has to be in checkoff.
You still avoid it on a process with Brogan, on the way applications...
Right, exactly, yeah. So part of the application is a checklist that includes...
That's a good point.
Right.
Agree to, see if Bren thinks this is a good idea, review it with her, and then put it in place, so that if I come on as a new member of the ZBA, I can look at this and say, "Ah, this is the way we function."
Right, so we attach a checklist to an application.
Yeah, checklist is what we need.
So what is your checklist protocol?
Or we have a checklist internally, so we know it's gone to all the right places.
But that is your process, Katie.
Right, but, so in other words, somebody...
You ought to have it in writing, and the board ought to vote on it, so that that is the process that you all have adopted, that shall be followed, and, you know, reviewed by your planner to make sure, and the building department in general, to make sure that there is nothing conflicting in municipal code or in the requirements of the building department, to conflict with what you want to do. But I think Richie made a very, very good point, and it's very important that it be done. Keep going for 15 more minutes.
Yeah.
So we can draft up a, um, a draft checklist for the April meeting?
Well, when Vicky and I are reviewing the, the format of a new form, right? Then, at the same time, you could be organizing in checklist form or whatever, a procedure with timeline.
Okay.
And, and we will, we will know that that's coming, and make that a part of the, of the application. Not that the, not that the applicant has to fill it out, but even the applicant should know that. The applicant should know that there is a process that says, it comes to us, it goes wherever it goes, that's 30 days, whatever. So, the topic of our procedure checklist should be part, then, of an application.
Okay.
And when, when we look at this packet, if there's, it seems to me that to facilitate dealing with people's ideas, it'd be nice if you could just say, and then maybe return to us these copies with any notes you have. "Oh, I really like this," or "I really don't like that," or "Maybe we could use this." So that we get your comments in written form, so we can deal with them. So it's not all coming over email.
Katie, what's the code that specifies?
All right, it's, um, what is it, 212, obviously. Oh, 21259, the area of procedure, and it is item four, four, just simply four.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm trying to figure out the 30 days and the 60 days thing. That, that, we have to have the public hearing within 60 days after receipt of an application or an appeal. So, we get one today, so we have to, I mean, I think at this meeting, we would basically have to vote to send that on to the planning board.
The application that they just dropped off this morning?
The application that, any applications that we have gotten prior to this meeting that we would be considering next meeting.
Okay.
I think we need to vote to send those to the planning board.
You mean, as we're getting ourselves organized, this is a...
We need to vote to do that, it sounds to me like it's...
Well, but it's, all right.
And also...
It says, "The board of appeals shall transmit a copy of such an appeal."
Okay.
So...
The board of appeals has a secretary.
And so the board of appeals secretary can do it. Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
But then also, do you want to be sending every ZBA application to the planning board, or how do you want it?
Yes, I think that's what the law says, that's what the, that's what the trustees have decided.
Okay.
And the planning board has the option of saying, "We're not going to even consider it, it's so small, and if they don't respond to us, they have approved."
Okay.
So, yeah, I think it can just be a regular procedure, and that way, there's no discretion on it, you know? We just do it, and...
Okay, that's good, so then tomorrow I will send those applications to the planning board, and to the county?
I don't know that this one has to go to the, well, one, oh, wait, is it, is it close enough to the...
If, if the other one had to go to the county, then this one probably...
Oh, it's the whole subdivision, okay, yes, to the county, please.
All right.
To the county.
So there needs to be understanding of that criteria as, as part of the sheet.
Yes.
So that sheet is something that the, the secretary and the building department, and we and the applicant can all see as the process is jotted down. I mean, when we get something, I guess, the deal would be to make a statement somewhere that the public hearing must be held before such and such a date.
Yes.
And then, you know, move with that information, so that we all can figure out who's on first.
Well, when we get the application, though, that's the kind of information that Brogan could just put onto this checklist right away. You know, sent to planning board. Plan, a, a public hearing on or, you know, April 14th, whatever it is for the specific application.
Also, something that Bren and the building inspectors found out a couple days ago was that before the, before an applicant comes to the ZBA to be, um, to appeal something, they have to first be denied. So, I guess the first step on the checklist would be, go to the building inspectors or the planning director to be, to have an official letter of denial, which would then be given to the ZBA.
Which is what triggers the ZBA actions.
So it triggers an appeal?
Yes.
Okay.
The old process was the planning board that gave that denial, and then it became...
Oh.
Every application with the planning board, planning board says, "We can't handle this, we're gonna have to go to the ZBA."
So maybe the planning board needs to come up with a criteria with the building department about when the building department can sign, can sign off on something? Or do you want everything to come to the planning board?
I don't mind anymore.
Well, it says again here in the, in the village code, that, um, once it's filed, upon, yeah, there's the fee schedule, "Upon payment of such a fee, the building inspector shall transmit to the board of appeals all papers constituting the record in the case." So it sounds like the building department sends it on to the zoning board of appeals. I mean, I think it...
But is that, is that because they've made the decision, or is it because they're moving the process along, having gotten word from the planning board that that's what the process is?
Let me read. "Each appeal or application shall refer to the specific provision of this chapter involved, and shall exactly set forth the interpretation that is claimed, or the details of the variance that is sought and the grounds on which it is claimed." Okay, that's all the public hearing stuff. Procedure for appeals, in addition to the procedures and... Notice of appeal shall be filed with the building inspector.
Because basically, wouldn't it just be that an applicant is just coming in to build a, like, "I wanna build a 8-foot fence," and then the building inspector says, "No." So, it would technically be as if the applicant doesn't know that they need a variance. But typically, what's been happening is that residents and new tenants are really informed about what they can and cannot do, so they've just been jumping to, "I need a 2-foot height variance for a fence," so we just need to kind of backtrack before they do that.
Well, the code in this section 212 provides for variances. And it, it, so that is something that can be brought to the zoning board of appeal, is a request for a variance without first getting a denial which needs to be appealed.
If that's in the code, it's not legal.
Okay, then that is between you and the board of trustees. I'm just looking at what is here in the code.
Are you in the process of reviewing the code?
Yes.
So a lot of these, some number of these things...
It's gonna be a process, yes.
Will, will come to the surface.
Yes, but certainly, keep bringing them to our attention, 'cause as we're going through it, you know, we're gonna find things, and you're gonna find different things, so... Yeah. Okay, so...
Katie, is there any problem, and maybe you answered this while I was messing.
No.
Is there any problem when an application comes in, and it needs to go to the county? Couldn't Brogan, part of the process be, did it go, just get unified or go and send up?
Yeah, that's, that's what you said.
Yeah.
Brogan gets it, goes to planning, goes to county, if, if it requires to go to county, so we just automatically...
And then any dates that that automatically triggers get noted on this list that we get as part of the application, this kind of procedures checklist. Then the dates, when something has to happen, would automatically be put on this procedures checklist.
But you've agreed, on top of the application form, that Vicky is suggesting that you're going to put the five questions.
Right, but that's separate, right.
Right on top, and have people write out little answers to it.
Right.
Yes.
We were under the impression that it was getting done that way.
But this way, the applicant would also know a public hearing is required. Would also know it's gonna go to the planning board, would also know what the dates are, and how long it's going to take, and...
Now, I have another question that's sort of relevant, and that is fee changes. Do they... Do they recommend the fee changes to the building department if they feel fees are under feed? And, or do you recommend to them for consideration, and then it comes to the village board? Or does the village board just set them?
You set them.
We have started to review the fee schedule, and there's a stack of neighboring fee schedules on my desk. Certainly, if the ZBA would like to see it, or the planning board, we can pass those recommendations along, and you can contribute to them before we pass them on to the board.
Because I would hope that that might happen. I think input from the boards that are affected and working are the most important to know.
Okay.
The fee schedule is attached to the information in that...
Right, but what I'm... Our fees have not been revised in years. And we have Bren now, who can make those recommendations. And it seems to me that you all would review the fees with Bren first, and then recommend them up.
Okay, sounds good to me.
I have a question about the files. Are the files kept in such a way that everything goes into one file under the whatever number of the location? Or does the planning board have a file? For example, you know, Ten Taylor Street, and the ZBA has a file, and the building inspector has a file? I think it should all be one file, so everybody knows what everybody else has done, but I'm wondering if that exists that way.
Well, right now, in the building department, we have a filing cabinet, and if you just look up ZBA 1309, everything related to Ten Taylor Street for ZBA 1309 is in that manila envelope. And, but I'm not sure what would happen then if the planning board were to review and to make it their own application, so it would be PV 1403. So that would be a separate application, but if they're just reviewing it and giving a recommendation, it would just go in that file as well. So unless it's a ZBA application, and then a different planning board application on the same property, then everything will just be in the same file.
What about the historic files on a property?
For the historic preservation?
No, no, just history.
Bren has a house, and she called it "The House," okay? And then 20, and she came before the planning board, did all of that stuff. Fifteen years later, Ellen buys the house, and she wants to do all sorts of things. It seems to me that we have had a disconnect between the history of a property and the current application being reviewed. And it seemed to me, both for the ZBA and the planning board, it would be very, very helpful if the planning board gets an application from Sally to do X, that they then know that that property has also undergone change five years before, 10 years before, been denied something before, because...
That's a good point.
As much as we all would love to be Carl Budman and spend 30 years or more of our lives working, boards change.
Yes.
And memories change.
And memories change.
And holders change, and so do address numbers.
Yes, whether any number changes...
To be a way to keep the package together somehow.
I don't know whether it would be all in one file, or the current application would have labels that say, "See, 1972, whatever code," that would tell you when that property has undergone change.
I'm setting up a relational database in my head.
Well, you know, but the other thing, it seems to me that would be, might be worth considering including in that, would be violations.
Amen.
Anything that has to do with the history of the property. What do you think?
We have a computer program that has the ability to do that, and we are evaluating if that is the right program for us, or if we want to invest in a better program.
Okay, you may be talking about computers. I'm talking about hard copy.
Okay. Certainly, a computer could tell us what folder and what to be looking at, even if we put in the parcel number and it says, "Planning Board, this in this filing cabinet, and ZBA, this in this filing cabinet."
So it's a directory in a sense?
Yeah.
It could be a directory, and it could also be a backup in that you'd have a print file, but you'd also have digitized copies that are, you know, essentially physically stored in different places.
You're gonna have to go back, Katie, because, what, seven years, and then you put it in storage, okay? Seven years in a property's history is nothing. So you're going to have to have a process that archives as well. So that tomorrow, Bren's sitting there, and she's looking at a property, she's gotta know whether there's archival history deposits that she can refer to, or does it have a history within the last seven years which are in the files? And then, of course, the point that Ellen just brought up, violations. So, I mean, there's gotta be a central way of putting all the data on a given property and its history. In a file.
I think that would really...
Go ahead.
That really would be the best of all possible worlds, and it may be practical to say that we're gonna start by saying any property that comes in, that property is researched, and this mega data fi, mega file is put together for that property.
But Ellen, I'm gonna, I think if I understand you, I don't think you want to start it with now, moving forward.
No, 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 no. I'm saying if, you know, if 24 Platakill comes up for some reason, then as this file is being set up for whatever this application is, for 24 Platakill, that that property is researched, and all of that goes into the file.
But eventually, all properties, whether there's something coming before you or coming before the planning board, there should be a historical tracking.
But there also has to be a practical way to get started. And the most useful to me would be knowing that I'm gonna have as much information as possible about the property I'm sitting here looking at now. So, I would love to see, you know, to the extent if we had unlimited capability, then yeah, okay, start, let's do everything. But it seems to me that it would be useful to start by going backwards on properties we're dealing with, right now.
But as we develop this, we have to remember to, you know, the old KISS technique, keep it so simple. For those times, and we've just been through them, when we had no building department. And no support. It has to be so obvious that it's easy for a new person to pick on. And I really hope we'll all keep that in mind.
I give you a very practical, we got just a couple of weeks before one of my clients was buying what he thought was a two-family house. And I get, I know the law. I know that the lot was much too small to have ever been approved for a two-family house. I also remember that I represented that client who didn't feel like Carl in the ransom hunt, so on, that we had been denied as EBA variance on that house once before. When we pulled the property file, sure enough, there was all paperwork denying the variance, denying it was a two-family house. It was all there in the file. So, at one time, I must have put everything in
That's great.
All the street files. Because in that case, there was all documentation that this guy hadn't gained, and hadn't inspected as a two-family house. The building inspector thought it was a two-family house. This guy said it was, and he paid for it as a two-family house. In actuality, the file bears out that it wasn't. That he may have bought what he thought was a two-family house.
Yeah, buyer beware.
So then that actually seems to me raises also a question of potential lawsuits or whatever, because if it had now been recognized or treated as a two-family house for X amount of time...
Well, the great thing about being a company is that you can be wrong.
I'll take it.
But you've only got a certain amount of time to correct your mistake when you find it.
And that's, I think, the point that Richie was raising is, all right, I'm selling my house. I sell it to Richie, and he's an innocent buyer. I mean, you can only say buyer beware. But I sell it to him as...
A two-family house.
Okay, I'm gonna sell it to him as a two-family house. He's interested in a two-family house. At what juncture does and who raise the issue?
Title insurance.
Is this legitimately a two-family house?
Title insurance.
Well, but not, when we bought our house, nobody in New Paltz had title insurance.
All we just search does is it sends a letter to the village that says, "Are there any outstanding violations against this property?" So, the village says, "We don't owe anything." That goes the letter back to the title company. And the title company being examined. So, you know, we started to drive bys, do visuals. I said we'd be picking up pools and sheds. Come by, say, "Women, where'd that pool come from? Where'd that shed come from?"
Who started drive bys?
The building inspector.
Now?
Yeah, they're doing it.
Oh, man. Could we get dumpsters and trash cans that are left out for days at a time?
The trash cans?
I know.
But code enforcement would actually be looking at the trash cans, right?
Yeah, but that's the same guys.
No, you have a code enforcement officer, too.
Okay, do we have to close the meeting?
No, 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 no.
We want to keep the meeting open.
We're gonna keep the meeting open.
When I was young, which is long before any of you were born, one of my favorite shows was, "This is Your Life." Carl Budman, this is your life in the Village of New Paltz. And before we begin, all of us want to tell you how much we love you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I have here a resolution for the board to consider. Whereas in 1982, Mr. Carl Budman became a member of the Village of New Paltz Zoning Board of Appeals, and whereas on February 11th, 2014, Mr. Carl Budman stepped down as chairman, resuming his position as a member of the Village of New Paltz Zoning Board of Appeals, and whereas the Village of New Paltz Zoning Board of Appeals recognizes Mr. Carl Budman's generous commitment, dedication, diligence, and earnest resolve. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Village of New Paltz Zoning Board of Appeals that Mr. Carl Budman Appreciation Resolution is hereby approved. May I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next, a very special award obtained by two very special people that I want to thank who helped organize and board naked our village clerk, Katie Bunker, and our deputy clerk, Alberta Shaw, who so willingly wanted to do this because they admire you so much. So I'm going to ask the village clerk to make a special presentation.
Am I going to get another kiss?
Katie will do that one.
Greetings from the Ulster County Executive Michael Heine. Ulster County Executive Honorable Michael P. Heine, certificate of excellence, presented to Carl O. Budman in recognition of your exemplary service to the community as the chairman and member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Village of New Paltz, New York, since 1982. Your commitment and dedication to improving the quality of life in Ulster County is truly appreciated. Together, we strive to make Ulster County the best place to live, work, and raise a family.
And now, a little special presentation from the village board. As your official liaison, we want to give you two village glasses with our seal and with your service engraved on it. And we hope every time you drink a glass of orange juice or have a beer, you will toast us, and we will toast you back in thoughts. And thank you so much. There's your second kiss. And the next person's not going to give you a kiss. Without further ado, and certainly, last but not least, the mayor of New Paltz would like to meet and greet you and make a few words, the honorable Mayor West.
And Carl, I would kiss you, but you're just not my type. First off, I'd like to read the resolution passed by the New Paltz Village Board to commemorate this occasion. Whereas Carl Budman, having been appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals by the Honorable John Vett, mayor of New Paltz, more than 30 years ago, and whereas Mayor Vett quickly appointed Mr. Budman to the chairmanship of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and whereas Mayor Robert Remsnyder, Mayor Tom Nyquist, Mayor Jason West, and Mayor Terry Dungan all saw fit to continue appointing Chairman Budman to lead the ZBA. Whereas for a quarter century, Chairman Budman has led the village in countless and often difficult land use issues. And whereas Chairman Budman is universally respected for his diligence, patience, wisdom, and judgment. And whereas Chairman Budman has performed this difficult work with grace, charm, and wit. And whereas Chairman Budman, after long considering his replacement, has recently retired from the chairmanship of the ZBA, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Village of New Paltz, I'm sorry, that the entire Village of New Paltz has benefited from his works in ways that most will never be aware of, and resolved that Chairman Budman's quiet guidance has improved the lives and the environment of our village. And resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Paltz, speaking on behalf of all village residents, past and present, does hereby extend our warmest thanks our regret at his retirement, and our hope that his retirement from the Zoning Board of Appeals leaves him more time to spend in his garden. Secondly, we have a plaque for the chairman commemorating his term of office. It says simply, "Thank you, Chairman Carl O. Budman, for your service, commitment, and dedication to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Village of New Paltz Community, How do you do, Chairman?
It should close with, "Rest in peace."
Not at all.
Rest, maybe, but you'll be too busy for peace, I think.
Okay, all right. So Carl, do you want to say anything?
Yes. Rarely am I at a loss for some word. This was quite unexpected and very much appreciated. I have to say that whatever service I have given has really been a labor of love. This village has given me a home, has embraced me and my family, has supported us through good times and sad times. So it really, truly has become my home. If anyone asked me, "Where's home?", it'd be no hesitation, it would be New Paltz, New York. Very much appreciate your thoughtfulness and your support.
Okay, so, one more thing. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all ayes.
And we now cordially invite you to join us for cake and champagne.